Office sixteen, four thirty. Thank God Sarah Gold said he was here. And we are on their team for it.
Any other items to be corrected? Motion to approve is adequate.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Close and sign. We have also received our council's payable. Mr. Gill, is this an addition that's in our list to the council's payable?
Yes, we see it as an AEP preliminary report of office, a twenty twenty-one D, Mayor.
Okay.
I'd like to add that for the revenue or council's payable for this month. And that's the only additions I have.
Now, if anybody give you any other bills? What's the pleasure of council's going to council's payable?
I'm ready for taking.
Sir, second?
Second.
Further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Close and sign. At this time, I will prepare us and quarters with the announcement that we are in a public hearing at this time to discuss the expansion of historic downtown lining. We have Mr. Jim Porter here with us from AEP who worked with us on the original project. I have sent, I have sent letters to all residents and businesses in the proposed area and advise them of this meeting for not having comments or questions regarding the proposed project. So at this time, do we have anyone here that has questions about the proposed project? Before we get started, before I begin, Jim, there is one. I got a call from a business here, Dominion Office Products, and that proposed site there is right at the corner of their property where they unload trucks.
Okay.
And the, and the vehicles.
And what's happening?
And we're probably going to have to look at adjusting that site.
Okay.
Okay? That was my note, so anyone else? Chris, do you need to speak with us tomorrow?
I was just going, I had briefly spoken with this gentleman and he basically answered my questions. And the only comment I have is I think this is an excellent idea and it just furthers a wonderful renovation, beautification you guys have done in the town. And I'm delighted. I'm just delighted. I was telling him I had hoped the way the little flag was, and I guess this sounds like a greedy person, but don't think bad of me, but lamp post on the corner always has a nostalgic flair to it.
Right.
But I said, as long as there's one in front of the house, I'm happy.
She has to work on her yard, Jim. That's her area, she works on.
But thank you for letting me speak.
Okay. Do we have any other comments that this time during the public hearing regarding the expansion of the historic lighting project? I keep following it so I can't see. Okay, hearing that, I will declare the public hearing closed. Chris, we thank everyone for being here in that regard. So, we have conducted the public hearing. We discussed previous council meeting. My question, I guess, to Mr. Leonard and Shane, can you update us the figure that was allocated that we could use for this? You remember it was a thirty, twenty?
It was twenty, I was thinking it was twenty-eight, four, something like that. Twenty-eight thousand, four hundred.
Am I right, Elijah? The bulk of this will be of main, urban maintenance, if we do it?
We've discussed urban maintenance and also discussed utilizing possibly our funds or general budget.
Okay.
But yes, we will, we will split that between two urban maintenance years to take the load off in a single year to lessen the burden on the town's general fund and S V I urban maintenance program.
That was a question, Jim, and glad you're here again. I understand we're in about a third way through our budget year. So, if we move forward on this, we'll talk about two budget cycles.
Right.
And we'll be enough time for that. If we, if we were to move forward, we can, we wish to deal with it in various funding sources during this year and finish it out after July one.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, and, and the way you approach this, price-wise, I, I talked to Kent Construction about this. As long as there's no major changes, its label stays the same. The thing that's variable and it's going up fast is the fixtures and poles. You know, you've heard about some auto plants shutting down because they don't have chips and prices of automobiles is going up. Same thing's happening in that respect. So, looking at budget money, and, and that's up to you all, but I would look at ordering the poles and the fixtures first.
Good.
And if you order a lump sum, get them all, then you get a cheaper price. And if you try to do a piecemeal, and if you do a piecemeal, the further you wait, the higher the price is going to be, from what we're seeing now.
Well, even, and probably it won't be, it won't be to January before we can give it, or cost good.
No, no, right now, in AEP, fortunately, we can be a little bit flexible on billing. So, the fixtures are running about six to eight weeks. The poles are running sixteen to twenty weeks. We would not bill the town until both are here for that. So you're looking at January, February timeframe for that portion of it. The conduit and wire, that's a commodity thing. It goes up and down. Who knows what it's going to be next spring when it's time to start to labor on it.
Jim, when we look to break this down into two fiscal years, just looking at the numbers, it may make sense to us to order the material and then maybe do the retrofit in this fiscal year?
Right.
Is that, does that make sense as far as the retrofit? Will that be kind of a separate group of activity that really doesn't apply to anything on this end of town that?
It is.
That don't need to coincide with anything else with the expansion of the project?
That, yeah, that, that's a good idea. And if you're interested, I do have a picture up here of some outdoor lighting, the color that you've got now downtown and the color that's going to be with LEDs. The, the entire industry is going through a big change right now. High-pressure sodium is going away very, very fast. In fact, if you were to buy the same fixture that you've got downtown now, it's about three hundred and fifty dollars a piece higher than the LED version of that same fixture.
Wow.
So it makes sense to retrofit downtown, get the color alike. Would you like to see it on the wall?
Sure. Can you turn those lights up a little?
There it goes. Okay. Boy, that's really hard to see.
It is.
Oh, my. Yeah, the colors really get washed out here.
Is the one on the left what we have now?
This is what you've got now. And this is what we're looking at here. If you get into an industrial plant where you're trying to keep everybody awake all night, you use it. But the American Medical Association, that's looking better now.
Yeah.
They say three thousand or less. So this is the, the color right now that we're looking at downtown. For, for a business establishment, this produces good colors on the facade. And if you have a window with a product inside of it, it'll help that product stand out better than with this.
It'll light real well. It'll look good lighting, but it won't be near as bright as it is downtown now with that one on the left.
Yeah, when you say bright, this is just as bright as this, but it's a different color.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a few. Okay, all right.
Any, any questions on that? Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, you're welcome.
But?
No, sorry, I'm done.
You didn't get the last one either.
I can't lie. No questions.
Okay. And as council appoint, will you wish to move forward with this project?
I'll make the motion to move forward.
With the, with the historic lighting project?
Historic lighting project. And I'm saying?
And a second? Any further discussion?
Mayor, I would just like to work with the, let the finance committee work with the streets committee, specifically Elijah, with the B Don maintenance budget and just kind of plan that I agree that it sounds like we probably need, we want to move forward. It sounds like the majority of the council wants to. Looks like we're going to be ordering some material pretty soon.
Yeah.
And we'd like maybe to have a schedule and a plan.
Which we do. Well, and we kind of do, and you did before. It's changed a little bit, but I like the idea of the retrofit first. I think we all feel that way and more what you're facing with supplies, et cetera. So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
As far as the layout, Mr. Vaughn, will AEP house, I'm sorry, where, will AEP house those poles and the fixtures until construction starts or will we, will we sort of?
The town will.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Close and sign. Jim, I signed this agreement. I didn't make, you want me to give it to you tonight?
Yeah.
It's not.
That's fine.
There you go. Let me thank you, Jim, for being here.
Sir, thank you.
Okay, we'll land down to public requests. First, on the agenda is Miss Angie Carper, Angie, you can hold.
Hello?
Hello, Mary.
Am I getting milkshakes?
I'm not. I'm just not making.
Yes, none.
I'll take the plate a little. And so I needed to talk with you all about honing my paint. You know, we didn't get to do anything live here. The chamber board did go ahead and approve for, for me to start working on it, so I needed to get approval from you guys. I know there's probably going to be concerns because of COVID still ongoing and it kind of affects children, but it would be still an outside event on Main Street if it gets approved. So I just wanted to bring it to you guys and see what you wanted to do.
Saturday night?
Yes.
On Saturday night?
Because Halloween is on Sunday and I wouldn't do that.
We're celebrating Saturday night. Okay. What I suggest here, this, this may, Angie, you and I talked a little bit. I have no problem with you planning it. Here's my concern, as you just said, what if this surge continues? We went through this enough with the first round. Before we announced events, we come back and said, oh, no, we canceled. We announced another event and we had to cancel.
Yeah.
So, I believe our October meeting is the eleventh.
Right. My plan would be to go ahead and start my part of the plan and only give it to my business members of the chamber that actually participate, so they can start the plan, but not really put it out to the public till we're closer to. I mean, I, I don't have to announce it anytime soon. I've had a lot of people call and ask.
I'm sure.
And I'm like, well, it's, it's on, on my deal that we have a decided a hundred fifty yet, so.
Well, I mean, I, it's a safe event for, as far as one of the, it was a great experience pre-cold.
Yes.
It was wonderful when we closed downtown Main Street and we had that event. And we all, we all are hoping that we can get back to those days, you know? But I, I, my, like I said, my concern is I don't want to announce it.
Right.
And then have to come back and cancel.
Yeah.
You see where?
Yeah, I totally agree. I, I would not want to, I don't want to tell anybody else I've canceled anything. I'll see, the fire last year about moving it, because people, because it's for what, six months after last, it was awful. It was really, really bad, so. And then they do this year because we had it, so.
Long wind, it's a long wind, yeah.
Angie, my concern is, because I want to have it, but if for some reason it gets moved in, you won't probably leave it inside like one year we have.
I would be more worried about having it inside than outside.
Right.
If, if we can't do it outside, I won't do it at all. And I feel like that we can maybe rearrange some things to the space out there. I mean, I mean, we need some space if we do it in the exact same area, but if we took over the schoolyard, we could space it out a little bit more and not have everybody on top of each other. But I mean, we never know either how many people are going to come. You know, the first year we had it, we had thirty-five hundred people.
What year was that?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
In nineteen, you had it, that to go, wasn't it?
Yes, because we had tornadoes. I mean, yeah, it's so crazy what we get with it. But we moved the whole entire block to be inside the conference center in like five hours. It's crazy.
I certainly agree with you. I agree with you that this is not a year ago inside.
No. And I do know that the hospital will not probably be a co-sponsor because Paula does not want to touch anything at this point. And Susan's not even, she couldn't even help it to get for the fair. So it would just be chamber business, so.
Let's, let me hear, let's hear from Liz to cancel. As far as what she, you're trying to plan, is what she wants.
Yeah, I just need to get my part started. I mean, if I have to stop, that's fine, but, and I would not put it out probably till like two weeks before, just somebody to be closer to.
I have no problem with that, I swear. I think it's a great idea.
Mm-hmm.
I'm a favorer. I, I want to do it. I think it's, and, and spacing it out, like, you know, was the idea, and doing it on the lawn, I think, will be taking those precautions.
Yeah. And I would have to go ahead and do the permit for the street Broadway, too, because they like, they have that new for staffing and everything early, so.
Let's go, let's see you on that committee. Deanna?
Okay, planning, like you said, you have to, you can't wait till the day before and say we're going to have it, so, and hope that we could have it.
Well, I'm, Scott, I'm good, I'm in the board. Okay.
Angie, do you think you'll have any kickback from the school board as far as using the lawn? And maybe talk to Mr. Green?
You never know, because it depends on what kinds of, maybe they're, you know, which way to move along that.
Okay.
And, and I think, too, it depends on how bad COVID is. I mean, but they're still in the school right now, so they can't really say you can't do a school function or, you know what I'm saying?
I can answer a little bit of Mary's question.
Because they're doing baseball.
They've already canceled homecoming parades and what party. And it's October the eighth.
And the football team, you know?
Yeah, I know.
Oh, okay.
It's a crazy time.
I don't, I guess it's probably a stretch.
Right, right.
And you know, I don't even know how many businesses, you know, usually my businesses jump at doing this stuff because it's free for the kids and everything, but I mean, I might only have, you know, ten or fifteen businesses wanting to do anything. I may not even need the extra space, though.
Sure, I understand.
I just won't know till we get into it, though.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one more thing.
Go ahead.
So I have been, wanted to start a Lebanon business group that's more concentrated than the chamber, because we do a lot more things here in Lebanon, but I'm not really putting it with the chamber. I just want to do it as a group of business owners for the town that meet and talk about things and maybe do events or maybe do things and to improve communication, because a lot of times we do things and businesses say why they didn't know we were doing it. And, and to give all businesses like a, a unified voice, too, so that you can hear from not just me sometimes, but people who don't know how to come and talk to the town or are afraid to come and talk to you guys about anything, kind of give a voice to the businesses, so. And I would like to have.
And them talk, too.
Some people, you know, they're just about getting in front of people, other people like me, they're parents. But I would like to have somebody from the council be part of that group, too. And I kind of volunteered, Mary, just because she listens to my wine and someone else's tea.
I can really accept that point.
Yes, I am.
And I've had about twenty-five business owners already say they're interested in participating in that, so.
Well, she can be the council's communication. Have to get, I mean, I think we're all going to be interested in how it's formulated and arranged.
I guess, but I'd like to hear what everybody else's needs are, too. I mean, I'm a boss, so.
Scott?
I'm good, it sounds like a great idea.
Well, you know, Deanna?
Yeah.
Elijah?
I'm perfectly fine with the increase. Communication is always best.
Yes.
Very good.
See, what else can I ask for?
You're two for two.
Thank y'all.
Bring a milkshake the next time you go.
Okay, I'll bring a milkshake the next meeting.
The next request is going to need a milkshake.
Oh, by the way, we're starting Susan's sandwiches next week, so.
Susan's sandwiches, okay. Alan B. is going to take the care of. I think Mr. Rassick's talking to, or Eric's talking to him. He's not going to be here for, I don't think he was coming.
I spoke with him earlier, Mayor, and he told, he told me I address his concerns if he gets blocking and stuff.
Okay, thank you very much.
He'll take care of his issue.
Okay. Arnie Sneed, is that the only one here on the, come on up, Arnie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I get started, I mentioned that I'm going to try to turn my hearing volume up, but I asked you all to respectfully turn your speaking volume up as much as you can. It's really difficult for me to hear through my ass. But actually, I want, I want to mention, and you, and you may have met the folk already, but I want to introduce a new family in town that all of you haven't met on this, personally this Jason Lumbek and their literally family are back here. And they, they bought lot number four in Greg Field's lands. And they got to put up a real nice big double wide on that lot. It's going to be real pretty. But he's, he's asked me some questions and some of them I think I may even know the answer, and some of them I think we might need some guidance from the council here. And so he may want to speak and find me actual opinions. He asked me to go first. But we done a little checking and the, of course, graciously gave us the conditional use permit for double wides on the property. And he's got his in there and we actually today, it's been difficult to get contractors, but today we got started on lot number one, questioning driveway and lot. But one of the things that the conditional use permit references is a, is a permanent foundation. And I, I know, I remember what I told you all the night you came out and asked for a grant to us, and I said, you know, we have a, you know, a permanent foundation, and that's what I, what I meant. But he, he raised a question, if you could picture, and if you all need to go out there and look at it sometime, but you know, when you do a double wide, you've got the interior block tiers. And then sometimes people will come out and put, you know, some direct decorative or block on the outside, too, make you look at it. But Mr. Lumbek's position is that the interior block do in fact serve as a permanent foundation. And I wasn't sure, and I'm honest, Mr. Taylor may know, courts and court received that presence that I'm not familiar with, but I did do a little checking and from what I can find out, HUD, HUD does recognize those interior if they're tied down, they have to be tied down. But if, if the interior block are tied down, HUD recognizes that as a permanent foundation. But therefore, the question comes is, does Mr. Lumbek have to go to the expense and so forth of putting some type of brick or something similar on the exterior, you know, with more of a, more of a decorative type thing? Or can, you know, just some, some kind of skirting piece of fish? And I told him and I felt like we, I, I couldn't make that call. I will say this, in a practical standpoint, it's gotten very difficult to try to get any, any brick length. Mr. Lumbek said his, his brick mason said he can't possibly get it to him until November. I'm sure that's true, because I'm running, I'm running the same thing. I was looking at that up there. And when you're there, I mean, you're almost, you may not be able to do it until spring, even at that. And, and I certainly don't want, they, they would like to get in, and I certainly don't want to delay them moving in and enjoying the place. Well, that's the first question. And I think the second question is, is with the underground electrical. Of course, we've got to put an underground water sewer in there. And town's doing that part. The electrical, of course, you want to get the trailer up and dig, dig the line and they hook it up. But it's, it's always been my intention, and I'm sure Greg's intention, to have the underground electrical in there. It's what we said when we made the city, and that's what we mean. Now, there's, there's, Mr. Lumbek has asked me, where is the, the pavement part of that? And I think my answer to that is, is that on the flat, I actually got the recorded, recorded flat, and these, I think these are exactly the same thing, but it's bigger. They're all signed, what you all proved. And on that flat, it does reference, it says proposed underground electrical something, lines. But what, in my opinion, what the proposal meant was about where the lines would go, because in reality, when you start digging, if you get blocked, you're going to lose six inches. So a surveyor can't tell you exactly where those lines are going to go. You just, you just put it based on where you think they've got over, based on, based on conversation with AEP and all that, when we had all that. So I, I don't think of any question about there being a matter of record on electric, underground requirement. And I guess, I think, unless you all disagree with that. And then I think the other issue is, from this point forward, what are we going to consider a permanent foundation?
Well, first, I want, of course, obviously, I want to yield to Mr. Taylor. So, Kenneth, I understand if HUD recognizes what's the interior.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
If HUD recognizes the interior blocking, that's, I've seen myself at this housing double wide, is permanent. Is there anything where we, I mean, do we want, do we require any, when we say permanent painting, do we talk about a skirt?
I guess that depends on what the town, what the council intended when the subdivision was, was approved. Because the way that it was done, it was approved, it was made a condition, a conditional use permit, that the homes be placed on a permanent foundation.
Okay.
Now, if the town had some envision, the council envisioned a particular type of foundation, I guess it needs to be clarified what, what they envisioned, I mean, if, I mean, I don't know.
Well, it is. What the board was planning commission?
Well, that's my thoughts. Wouldn't we leave, wouldn't that be?
Did not, did it bring anything of that in the minutes?
They recommended a permanent foundation.
My thoughts are they would need to define it for the town or make a recommendation on what permanent foundation is as well.
Do there a difference in a modular and a double wide? It would make that distinction.
There he is, they've visualized, this is a double wide.
This is a double wide.
Yeah.
So we need, okay, that's the first thing. So our planning commission, our planning commission is going to have to be, Arnie, to define, when they say permanent foundation, what that meant.
That's fine.
Now, the second thing about this utility requirement, underground utilities, I guess I have a couple of questions. First of all, I understand what you've said on, on the flat and what Mr. Taylor had told me earlier is proposed there. The question I would have for you, Greg, whoever sells those lots, you sold it to Mr. Lumbek, where, was, when you sell that property lot, do you tell them that underground utilities is part of the requirement of purchasing this lot?
I didn't sell that lot. That's a fair question.
Okay.
That, that deal was done between Mr. Fields and Mr. Lumbek.
Oh.
Mr. Lumbek, they both test it. Mr. Zombak, they both tested it. So I had no conversation with them. When I talk to people about those lots when they call, and when they're interested, that's what gets the point about the whole what's required. I tell them, you gotta have underground electrical, it's gonna have water here, it has water sewer underground.
Yeah.
And up to this point, I've been saying you gotta have a solid foundation. And when I, in my mind, you know, I meant the exterior, but I mean, that might be up to question. That's exactly what that definition is.
Okay.
So Mr. Zombak can better address that issue as far as what he and Greg talked about. Greg, I just sent him a text, he was gonna be here, but he's got a cow in labor and had a cold bed, so. But that's where I should put that in with respect to.
So you sold lot one?
They're on pole, my pole.
No, did you sell lot one, you?
Yeah.
So those property owners are aware of the underground?
Well, that's, yeah, I'm actually handling that pole at that lot.
Okay. Anything else right now?
Well, did we answer the first question about two different? There's almost three questions there. So is it not up to the planning commission to decide the exterior wall, if that's required or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what we said, I said the planning commission.
Okay. Well, I thought, I thought he was asking, you know, if it had to be, like you said, had to be tied, if it had to be wrapped or something.
I guess, planning commission will recommend you what they think of you, if you're not called officially, I guess.
That's what it was.
But I have a problem with that, that needs to be discussed by some of them.
Shed a little light from my side of the fence. The permanent foundation is just appears tied down. That's HUD's definition, that's what all these mobile home companies are gonna follow. They, they're not gonna, you know, whatever you do in town, it has to be, I'm not an attorney, but it would have to be something in writing, a conditional, you know, something attached to.
Well, it's in writing, it's in the conditional use permit, it has to be a permanent foundation. Now, your question is, what is a permanent foundation? Which is why the councilers wanna have the planning commission clarify what they meant when they said that. They said that's the permanent foundation.
Right, but that would have to be in writing, attached to my deed prior to my purchase.
It's in writing, the permanent foundation's required, it's in the conditional use permit.
Right, but you can't change the definition of a permanent foundation.
Nobody's standing, nobody's standing, nobody's gonna change it. They're gonna ask them what you mean when you said it.
Right. I guess, in my research, my counsel, I don't have to do, I didn't have to do underground, and I don't have to do block serving. That's the information I have. Why has this been a problem? This has been a problem because I bought a piece of property from a gentleman who has a lot of history in this town. Now, Mr. Sneed was not a part of that sale, so we didn't have the privy meeting, having these conversations. Now, I took this man's word for what I purchased. That's my fault. I should've run this to ground before I started doing any work. But when you have an electrical company, Jeff, is that his name, Jeff? So Jeff came out to book it, where we were gonna put our poles. Okay, now, let's keep in mind, I have power on that property above ground at my garage. I'm being told by Mr. Fields that I have to do all these things. And he's running interference with the water company, the electric company, and, you know, and I can't be there twenty-four hours a day. So he's telling these people what to do. I come, I come back to my property and there's stuff being dug, and I'm easygoing, okay? No, that looks great. If you say that's the way it's supposed to be, I'm trusting you, because it seems like everybody else knows. So A D P said I did not have to go below ground. Well, Greg argued with him there and said, no, you have to go underground. So after that conversation, just, you know, if he's saying it, just do it, you know? But that's added time. And time, as we all know, is money. I'm paying almost twelve, fifteen hundred dollars a week to live in a hotel. This added three weeks to my life, okay? Not to mention, that underground utility, ninety feet, you can attest it's close to three grand after you get the wire, the conduit, and all of that. And then I've gotta wait for them to come out now, and I've gotta wait for Greg to pay his money, so that they dig under his road. I've gotta wait for them to come out and set the first pole, dig under there, then do mine. And you had mentioned, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but you had mentioned how you guys are, you know, with payment, you're kind of able to be a little mean and all with me. I can't get a pole set, they won't even put the order in for a pole until I'm paid. Well, I can't pay other than mailing it, which we all know how that works. You mail it, it takes a week, then they gotta process a check, it takes a week to be called to pay over the phone or online. And here, we can't even do that until Tuesday, tomorrow. And then once that gets paid, then a number gets sent off to, you know, somebody, and then they'll put a number in to have the poles set, and this, that, and the other. So I'm bleeding money based off of somebody's word on a plat that has been approved, but only as proposed. There are no covenants, there's nothing attached to this at all. I'm not at the county level, not at the town level, not at the courthouse. And I just try to be compliant and be a part, not cause a problem. But now, I'm over ten thousand dollars out of pocket on a story. That's a problem. I have, you know, I got kids, I'm disabled. And to have a property being sold, and having these things go on, and not being able to track down the paperwork. I mean, I've talked to you, I've talked to you, and this has been a two-week process of just running this to ground. And I came to your office and we spoke, and you told me I had to do these things. That bothers me a little bit, because I don't really tell them, you know I don't. So they tell me that I do? I don't understand, I don't understand how that happens. Okay, I don't. You know as well as I do, that that has to be legally attached, you write in a document attached to that.
Sir, when you buy these property, that refers to the plat, you buy subject to what's on the plat?
It should be in the deed, it's not, and there are no attachments.
I'm telling you, you buy subject to what the plat says.
I'm not. So I'm not gonna do the block. I have to eat the money that I've lost on the electric. I'm not happy about that, and I think that that needs to be addressed. I think also what needs to be addressed is that that is in town limits. I can't get trash picked up. That wasn't disclosed either when we purchased. I'm not trying to be a fool on anybody's side, but I'm not ten plus, okay? That's a hurt piece for me, I like myself. We've been homeless for three years. We finally caught our break. And now, all my money is gonna be gone. I have to sell my truck and everything, because Variety had to verify the block serving. Who did they verify that with? They had no choice but to verify what person sold the property, which I believe they called you. So I, now I've got no heat pump, even work, because why order something that you can't even install until November? So I made them order it today. But that, how long is that gonna take? So how many, how much more time am I out? And then, when am I gonna get my occupancy permit? You know, I'm running around here like crazy, trying to get all these things figured out, and there aren't, there is no, there's nothing solid in writing, there should be. There should be, this is more than five hundred dollars, right? What are the limits? Five hundred dollars has to be in writing, five thousand, there is.
How much are covered?
So I don't understand why I wouldn't have been able to pull my electric brake off my garage. You know, why was mine changed?
Well, that's something you probably, though, Jason, gonna have to resolve with Greg.
Probably.
That's where it's going, I mean, when you're in property issues, like you and Tyler, this is, you bought property of person A. We don't, as a government body, we don't, we don't, we don't mediate that. You know, that's, I guess, you know, it's between, you know, legal counsel or whatever.
Which I have, and I know, I'm good. I think that it's more or less for the next two lots that it's sold.
Yes.
You know what I mean? I don't wanna see anybody else go through it on the under, and spend money that they shouldn't have to. But I agree, you know, the block is nice, and I agree that there needs to be, you know, something there. You don't want anybody doing anything they want, because you never know what somebody's gonna do. And I'm more than happy to, you know, let's work it out and put something nice there, we'll get it in writing, so you don't have problems with the other free. But I also think that if we're gonna do that, we need to talk about the inconvenience I have to incur based on it. So if you, if you want, have that conversation open to it.
I think going back to your point, we're gonna probably have to engage a planning commission. Is that what we're talking about?
Well, yeah, but there's still, we can have a planning commission, yes, planning to me, but some of his issues, the planning commission takes over already.
You can't go back on me at all, because mine, we were number one. I'm the one and number four sold. You can't go back and change anything at this point. You have to literally file a lawsuit against me. And the only thing you have on me would be the electric. But I already did it, so that doesn't matter. I want the place to look nice, and I want everybody to be felt, dealt with fairly, and, you know, everything be open book when they buy the property.
I understand, you wanna live with your family, you wanna live with your family, and move out of Oakdale, live in your house. We certainly understand that.
And you said you wanna get trash picked up?
Well, we are going, it is what it is. I'll, I can deal with that.
If you get in town, you'll get trash picked up.
It's on a private road.
It's private, it's downtown.
So you're bringing up the edge of an interstate road and they're picking up?
Yeah, you gotta work out. I just think that people should know, so that comment is more for, hey, make sure they know, because you've been buying something town already. You automatically assume you're getting the benefits of living in town. I'm paying for it. But I do have one question, although you all can help me with this. I can get a generator delivered to my home tonight. My electric inspection's done, and the water is on. I can't put a deck up until the skirting, the block is done, I can't get my heat put up. Can I move into my home without having to worry about getting, having a problem? I don't know what kind of problem I have, could have, but can I move into my home?
I think you matched that, that's a question for building inspector.
Mickey is your answer there.
Yeah, Mickey, he came out, he put the tag on me.
If he puts you, you get that occupancy permit from Mickey, right? Yes, you can move into your home.
Okay, he can forego?
He's the one that does that.
You have to talk to him about that.
See, he's, we don't have a building official. He is accounting, he is, he's the one that does that. So, well, I do, it's tomorrow, go gun offices and ask him that question, help to Rust County, give him a second.
Get a call today, he's a busy man.
He is busy, but he'll answer your question, I will tell you that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, new business. ARPA committee recommendations. We had an ARPA committee meeting prior to the council meeting this evening. You know, I'm not sure if we have any recommendations. I'll turn it over to you.
No, I don't recall any, any motions being made for items for approval, Mayor. Yeah, no action.
We'll move out of B to, we probably, in a closed session, legal advice on that one. I believe we received a quote, Shane, from National Pools Splash Pad Recirculation Quote, and I think it's in our agenda paper. You know, it's up behind the elevated technology. And this, we've got, the way I'm reading this, we have three different quotes. One's for recycling of water project at Splash Pad.
Correct.
There's one for maintenance or cleaning of the chemicals of the kitty pool.
There's another treatment system, same treatment system.
Kitty pool. And then there's one for kitty's quote.
Yes.
So, council asks for these quotes from National Pools. I understand, he probably, if approved, he wouldn't be able to start on this until January.
He told me the earliest he could start would be sometime like December.
Okay.
But it's more like January before he can start.
But he could get it done before next season, Splash Pad.
Yes.
Scott, you probably, we, I may have mentioned, Elijah, this is probably one of those we should add to the ARPA committee for infrastructure, could we not?
Yeah, I think.
I do believe that possibly two other repro, that these projects maybe would fall under water conservation.
Yep.
And which, you know, opens it up for water sewer infrastructure funds through ARPA. So we definitely need to add that. It was actually on my agenda, on my list to cover, Tommy, we ran out of time.
Right.
So we'll continue that discussion in our next ARPA meeting, if that's okay, committee.
All right, if you all keep those with you, but, you know, this is something we've been talking about, that we want, that we know, not only we wanna do, I think we need to do it for the, for the safer water operation, and the amount of water used because it's the waste area.
It's, Mayor, it's gonna pay for itself pretty quick. I mean, just doing the math, I'm walking the sale, a gallon of water for, the forty-two thousand dollar cost there is, is, when you're using, when you're using anywhere from two and a half million to three and a half million gallons per month, which is roughly seventy-five to eighty-five thousand gallons per day, that's not being recirculated, it's gonna, it's gonna pay for itself really fast. One thing I did wanna bring to the council's attention is in the additional comments, this is not a term key, this quote. There's a lot of owner responsible responsibilities back here. But even with that being said, I don't think it's anything that's not, that we're not capable of building a house. But I think it's, I think it's a perfect project for ARPA funds as far as water conservation, due to the fact of it's gonna save the town, infrastructure-wise, the water trickle plant producing all those clean gallons of water that's gonna be wasted. Not only that, it's, I mean, that's a burden on the water trickle plant.
Did they say something like thirty percent of the water being used was for that? Does that sound right?
Well, when you take, when you take, there, I think in July, we produced, I think it was roughly nineteen million gallons, and three million gallons of that was due to the Splash Pad in general. About sixteen percent.
Well, yeah, sixteen, yeah. I would call council's attention, of course, I know we're gonna be meeting again, but I know why. The only reason I mention this to you, if you'll notice on these quotes, this bill, this quote will expire October 2nd, which is before we meet again at October, our regular meeting. So if everyone could read this, read the additional comments prior to the twenty-third, unless you, if you do not wish to move forward tonight with this, if you could have, if they have a chance to read it, be ready to act on it, and if you're gonna act on it on September twenty-third, we'll probably, this quote will change by the time we get to that.
I do have a question, Scott, you can probably answer this, on our purchase policy, is this something that needs bid out since it's over thirty thousand dollars?
When we, yes, answering your question, anything over thirty thousand dollars will require an additional quote. I think when we actually, when we bided out the pool project, I think that we had, we only had two quotes, if I believe that's correct. One's from North Carolina, and one's from Roanoke. So that may be something that Shane needs to do, at least reach out to the other company. The problem is, National Pools is familiar with our current setup over there, they won the bid prior. And I believe that the additional work or the owner responsibility actually has to do with our working relationship with them. I think that actually, they worked with us to cut the bid down even further, or to help us with cost-saving measures by allowing us to do estimation work and so forth with the town. So that's gonna be, I actually wrote that down for finance committee, do we need to bid that out or not, National Pools? Because, one, they won the bid prior to when we renovated the total pool. And two, they allow us to cut costs by allowing us to do some of the work ourselves with our men, as far as the, the infrastructure work, or the groundwork, or the earthwork, so to speak, so.
So what you're saying is that's, that discounts pretty well building with us doing all our own groundwork?
I think so.
Okay.
I think so. But that's, I think that, I think in the meantime, while we, well, until we meet again, it's worth Shane thinking, reaching out to an additional company to try to get additional quote, and also ask the gentleman if the quote would be good until our October meeting, if he'd be willing to extend that. I think those two things could happen, you know, while we're working on another business. I think those two things could happen, uh, you know, while we're, uh, working on other business till we meet again.
I think it's a possibility that he would extend that quote too. I mean, uh, that's who I always deal with, with pool supplies and everything, so he's real familiar with, with even the guys that work here. He knows them. They were here when they, when they did all the pool stuff, and they did, did the new system in the hole. So they know those guys, and when they came down here, you know, they, they remember them, stuff like that. So I think he would extend that quote. I'll tell him to win, is what he says.
It's to my government.
And then, if, if, if I always jump to another company, if you know that company in North Carolina, what can they do?
It might be on file somewhere.
Okay.
And it, you know, may not, obviously it took a while to get this one, so maybe, so we, we, that may not be possible. But, but two, again, where they already set up and installed what we do have over there, you know, that may be an issue too. Where this company is familiar, did the work, and is actually going to be running the system, uh, in conjunction with what we have over there, so. But it's worth a call, I guess, Diane, if we can look and see, uh, the bid should be on record.
Okay. Alright, um, we have Kim quote, it's, it's the first thing, I believe we asked for, Scott. Is that, is this the quote for Kim or for looking downtown?
Yes. Uh, I just asked Diane to put it on the agenda, and in, in the information. I didn't know the quote until I got my packet, uh, but it's something just, just to consider. I don't think we got to take that out of mind, but it's something, uh, where we had asked administrative staff to get us that quote, and here it is.
Okay.
What do we already have there, or do we not?
Once we have there, it won't work, won't do what you asked.
I think it was just security cameras.
Just for that area?
Just for that specific area.
Alright, so we're tabling that item as well, correct? Alright, now, in the last few week or so, particularly last week, I'm going to give you some updates. Uh, most of the things that I oversaw while I've been working with Billy and staff and Diane, so you all know. Uh, one thing Diane hit me with, the last Wednesday, I had, did we have three conference calls one day? Was it Wednesday?
I think you had two, and I think you had about three or something.
Yeah. So, I don't mean, the first one there is the follow-up conference call that was required for Virginia Fire Services Board to come down, request to available fire department review program. Real nice folks, we had, on the conference call, basically, uh, they have a board meeting at the, it's like the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of September. Uh, once, in other words, they, they will decide whether they will do this or not. It's not automatic, okay? Normally, they do counties, that was the first question we asked, asked me, is this for Russell County? I said, no, this is for the county of Lebanon. So, we'll know at the end of this month, if the board, you know, send someone down here to do that. And it probably, I think you told us, upon approval by their board, it would be, was it October, November, December? Before they finish, depends on the schedule before they got, uh...
I would be set October.
Yeah, October, where there's other reviews in this part of the state. So, I'll, I'll let you know in September when we hear from the board. The floodplain update, uh, Chris was hit a little bit, but I thought, uh, on that conference call, where, where we don't have, uh, again, our own, uh, building inspector official. Supposed to be a floodplain maintenance and organization agreement. Here, I think we have it somewhere in, in our books, which are, anyway, they'll be down here in October, I believe it's twenty-seventh, for a site visit to go over the floodplain requirements to Department of Conservation. Mickey's already agreed, I talked to Mickey Ray, he's, I mean, this, he already knows what I'm talking about, that's his world. So, he will sit in with us on that meeting in October. And if more information comes available, we'll send it to you. And the last conference call I had was Jim Baldwin and Shane joined us on the A R C grant. That was a productive meeting, I thought Shane you can add your name. But, uh, also, we had to dot, basically dot a few i's, cross a few t's, clearups, and language. And wanted to know, like, the number of businesses in the downtown area, which was ahead, I read this in. There was something else they wanted to know that we thought we'd already seen. Oh, the, the letter of commitment from other agencies.
Yes.
We sent letters in the original grant, showed, you know, the grant, we had, we submitted the war leather grants from V C, the, kind of flat dough, the BAC Commission. So we took care of all that, uh, and Jim is a master, he, he has such, let me tell you, Jim has a great relationship with A R C, I must tell you. So, anyway, long story short, final update, or I guess final approval, they anticipated would be the end of this month, can you talk to them? Which will then turn us loose, or yes, Scott, question you'd asked about, uh, it turns us loose to start. Shane's been working a little bit on potential preliminary bid packages for the interior. But there's no, based on their requirements, uh, this, some of the shit, things may change on bid documents. So, at the earliest, I think we'll be bidding that out, I guess, is to be ready to talk at the October meeting, if we hear from A R C by September. So, do you, you feel, are preliminary discussions on those?
Yeah, I think it'll be in September sometime, I mean, near the end, first November, I think that's one of the...
Shane, is, uh, I remember when you did the first application. Is there a big difference, and I haven't, I haven't seen the updated application when we submitted it. But did we, was our ask a little different with our breakdown on like construction versus technology packaging versus seating, or is it very similar?
I think it was pretty much similar. We, uh, we might have added some verbiage explaining why we needed it, stuff like that. But it's for the interior, it's for the seating, it's for all the electrical, all the, the sound system, stuff like that, the curtains, all that. So that's what we asked for in the, uh, the application, and that's what Scott funded. So, uh, that's what we'll have to build that bid, bid package on. The question is, though, are they going to allow myself to do a bid package? Or are they going to require a, that be done by engineering? That's, that's the big question.
Is there, do you recall if there's not, if, if part of that, uh, application was for, uh, last phase of construction? Or is it all interior?
I think we did put, I think we did put some construction on there, Jim, Jim Baldwin, make sure we did that just so we, we could cover some of that last bit of, of construction in that. So I think there is construction, which, that's all still interior. So it's all interior work, something we could finish, we can still finish. And that, that also, that also buys your equipment, everything, that, anything you need for the facility, you, you'll purchase with these A R C funds. And another thing too, we got to think about too, is, uh, somebody's going to have to inspect that, that work that's completed. But that's where I'm thinking, they're going to come back and say, we're going to have to have an engineering role. Inspects the work that's completed to the specs that were supposed to be done. We don't have that right now.
Will they make us bid out those services, or will we be able to select, uh, you know, an engineering firm?
Uh, I think if you're paying for with town funds, that would be your decision. Uh, if you're, I, I can't remember if there's any funding in there for engineering fees. I can't remember, I'd have to look at that budget.
Yeah.
But if there's, if you're going to use A R C funds, I'm sure they would require you to bid that out. Or to follow local procurement.
Anything else on that topic? Okay, uh, you should have at your desk Nathan Brown did a proposed, uh, state championship signage, which would be kind of off exit one and off exit two, pitch road exit. That's a preliminary drawing of what, uh, he's trying to keep it in the same frame of our signage that we, we come into town. So, if this is something you like, I don't know, I thought maybe we'd want the posting black instead of gray. I don't know what y'all think.
I'd turn that down, so.
I think it's supposed to be black, I may be wrong.
Okay. Do y'all like that rendering, that proposed rendering? Flash?
I think it looks nice. I'm not a fan of champs.
You listen, what, what are you going to call it?
I would rather be, I would rather state champions, and I understand there's spacing requirement there.
I think he could fix that top thing to make that work, I agree with you. I can ask you that.
Should be what?
Champions, state champions, not champions.
Yeah.
This, this sounds more professional.
You get, uh, dog, Scott?
Yeah, I'm good.
Now, do I have y'all's authority to work with Nathan and Kenny on completing this project, Keith?
Do we get a, any type of a budget on that?
Mayor strikes, he didn't make one come in.
Mayor, can we?
Do you?
So you don't know how much it's going to cost?
Let me get, let me talk to Keith, Nathan, and Kenny, and Kenny Stoops, and we'll get some preliminary cost and all. We, we can do this in October as well.
Can you, uh, can you add sodding that hillside as part of the, part of the plan for the signage?
I think we do that regardless of the size.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I don't think seating is just going to take care of that. I think we're going to have to have some topsoil on there. I just think it just looks so much better. I know it's kind of a dry rocky area anyway, and if we're going to invest in, in, you know, our landscape enhancements and then that kind of matches, you know, what we've done, I think it'd be good to dress up.
It will be better.
Dress up that hillside a little bit as part of the project.
We did some sodding, where, where could we do it?
I believe it's cheaper to seed it, to sod it than it is to...
We did it at Rick's Center.
We sod it in the entrance park.
If we go get it, it's pretty, real reasonable for the sodding.
And which side, entrance park?
We did it in front of the pool area.
Yeah.
The bank, the pool, that hand up right here, with the grass.
I believe that came from somewhere around Virginia Park.
You take, you take, uh, Oka Parks sod, masturbate.
That's right. Alright, I will, let's put that, continue that to the October agenda, so we get some more information, Kyle's class? Is anybody agreeing with that?
Yes, sir.
Uh, at your desk, I also put a, uh, copy of proposals for sudden corrosion, uh, water plants, this for the painting, exterior and interior. I'd like for this to go to Water and Sewer Committee and have them time to review it, and invite all council to that, and do some planning on that as well, okay?
Is that a committee?
We put it with Water Sewer Committee.
Down in the agenda, or you told me?
No.
No, we're going to have a committee meeting. And I would like to have a committee meeting, once we have all of the P E Rs in.
Which is supposed to be Friday, by the way. That's where you watch, I probably put it in the...
We're waiting on that last one.
Yeah, we're waiting on the one. Okay, um, chief discus.
Yes, sir.
We get a break, anything? Yeah, here just a second.
Okay, uh, I'll be quick for you. Uh, for the month of August, uh, the town issued thirty-nine summonses, uh, had twenty-one, uh, total warrants issued, or served, responded to six total vehicle crashes, two DUI arrests, and seventeen misdemeanor arrests, four felony arrests, and responded to twenty-five, uh, assist motorist calls. We drove ten thousand and seven miles, I answered four hundred and twenty-seven call service. On our, our D T F report, I took a, a little bit different approach this time, I think it might, uh, I'll let you guys look. Actually, for the, the last month, since our last council meeting, I printed out some pictures of the, of actual buys that were made by L P F. If you guys like to take a look at that.
We'll talk to you about that a little bit later.
Okay, just say those for later, okay. But there were thirteen successful purchases, four intent purchases out, and they served four warrants for us. With our C-TAC program, there were fourteen total C-TAC transfers taken in, seven of those were for the town, but several were for the county. Other thing I would kind of let you know, but as, as I've been talking a little bit more with the guy from, on, on our radios, just to see what else we could kind of work on that, and he wanted me to just, before he went any further with it, he wanted me to just see what you guys thought, if he could get a finance option. Would you guys be interested in him just looking and seeing what it would be, if we could finance it as opposed to one lump sum?
I'd look at it both ways, sure.
Any option would be better, interest rates are low, and if we can sort it out.
And, and he said too, that right now we're looking at, I told him, of course, we're, we're maybe a few months away from looking at it, but he said that he may even, uh, kind of approach it with his manager on, hey, listen, we're, we're getting ready to get into the fourth quarter, or, or sales are wherever they are, and he may be giving us a, like a promotion, promotion, so. He's working with us to try to get that now a little bit.
That gives us another option, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
But he wanted me, like I said, I wanted to, before I even told him to do it, I wanted to make sure that was okay, to be honest.
I believe council's saying it's good to do that.
Okay. Other than that, everything's, is, is rolling pretty good.
Uh, Mr. Taylor, that you're, let's see, we have, you have a proposal session, I have one.
Yeah, I don't have any at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Committee reports, let me see who's got first of all. I know Elijah, you have a committee report, my...
Hi there.
Mary. The...
Elijah and I met together, our committee.
Okay, dog, you have anything, Scott?
Brief, briefly, yeah.
Can, y'all want to do those before closed session, or after?
I'm maybe after, it won't take me but a minute, but I, I can do either. Um, I'm just giving information, not anything for discussion.
Okay. If we do the committee reports, we will take, uh, then we'll move forward with our ranking in the closed session. So, go ahead, Elijah.
Uh, my, this is on the State Street Committee, um, or Streets Committee. Uh, currently, we've, to date, uh, expenses are two hundred and thirteen thousand, five ninety-six, seventy-two. Uh, we can take that number from the nine forty-four that we're allocated. Uh, we have a seven hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and three dollar, twenty-eight cent balance, which is twenty-three percent utilized to date. Uh, that does not include the lighting project that we just, uh, that we just disposed with, with Mr. Porter. Just to give you a heads up on that. Uh, but relatively with our, with our budget, um, State Street budget, we're, we're roughly allocate seventy-eight thousand, six hundred dollars a month. Uh, when you divide that number by twelve. Uh, one thing I do want to talk about is, uh, is the lower wall down here below Main Street. I think initially we had talked about redoing that wall, and they were wanting to, you know, they had looked at doing an eight-inch thick wall up the side to refurbish that with a cap on top, which was, which is going to reach, I think, close to twenty-three inches. Um, and I may be wrong on that, on that distance on top. But, uh, just through conversation with, uh, with Scott, who's on the Streets Committee with me, and Billy, and, and... with Scott, who's on the Streets Committee with me, and Billy, and he's had conversations with others, I think we can do a six-inch thick wall. I think four-inch may, we may have a little bit of an integrity issue there, and I know that the council, or, you know, the Streets Committee anyway, doesn't really want an industrial-looking wall down there, we'd like for it to be decorative. So, if we can do a six-inch thick wall with a top cap, I think we can put a, we can put a cap on top, a decorative cap, and even if we wanted to go back and do a stacked rock project like our signage, we can do that, and it's still not going to exceed the eight-inch that was originally proposed. So, I think we're good to go there. What I would recommend is, since we are taking up a little bit more space on that wall refurbishing aesthetically, I do recommend that we remove the two parking spaces in front of the realty company there, that creates a bottleneck at the top, where it narrows anyway, something that we can discuss. It's just something that, down there looking at the wall, looking at, you know, the tightness, it's a one-way street, it's not a two-way street. That still gives us roughly, I think, eighteen foot, six inches of rideaway, but when you add the parking spaces up there in the mornings or in the evenings for school pickup and they drop off in middle school, that creates a tighter bottleneck, what we're getting ready to replace, and I would kind of like to protect that asset if we're going to spend that type of money on it and make it decorative. So, as far as that goes, I think, I think as far as the State Street budget, we're looking, we're looking pretty solid so far.
Mayor, I'd like to move forward with the lower wall project. I mean, is that something that you can communicate with the department heads, and just for them to put it on their, their calendar?
And that project, I think we may have discussed it, maybe not, I think it's going to run roughly around thirty-three thousand dollars.
Maybe cheaper than it would want, six-inch.
It may be, and that, you know, that'd give the council a little bit of room to decide, you know, what we want to do, if we want to add a decorative, you know, add some decor action to it to make it more appealing to the residents that live there below it. But we can, we can always go back and do that at a later time, it's not something to do at the same time, so.
In other words, we can do the wall, worry about the parking spaces later, or is that one of the saves?
I mean, my recommendation would be that we, that we talk to that business owner and let them know that we're getting ready to refurbish that wall, I just think that creates a hazard there. It's just a tight, it creates a tight spot there. But that's just my recommendation, that the council can make that decision.
They're not going to get, they're not going to want to give up a parking space in front of buildings.
There's only two, there's only two spaces for the business there.
Well, the concern was, we didn't want to build an eight-inch wall, because we didn't want to take up any more space in the runway.
Well, I mean, we're actually saving room though, if we do, if we move it from eight inches to six inches.
Two inches.
We're saving two inches.
That's the same as two parking spots, yeah.
Well, I just, I mean.
I'd like to look at.
It's just a recommendation, it changed, when you, when you actually get down there and stand, and you look both ways, it changes the view when you look at that being opened up, and I've seen the school traffic, especially in the evenings when kids are being picked up, because they all pile up to Main Street and have to stop, and it's just, it's a close quarter there. It's just, just a recommendation, I would recommend the council go down and just drive in their stop, get out and look at it, but I think we need to move forward with. Also, one other thing on that wall, we did talk to Jeff Buchanan about the drainage. You know, the current drains are at the bottom of the wall, and he stated that, that he, he would like to see drains, but I talked to Billy today, and he said that, you know, just pick up, he knows that they're blocked off, he knows that there's no runoff there, but just, just for spec, he thinks that.
Were you down to that, the other panel up toward Main Street too?
Well, yeah, we're, you know, when we add to that, we'll tuck that back in, because that wall's not a radius like this table here. It actually runs down at angles, and it's chiseled, so once we get to the top, we'll actually bring that back in, probably a twenty-degree angle back up toward Main Street, right at the end of the flower box. So, it's going to open that up a little bit, not make it any tighter than it currently is currently.
Uh, Don, Deanna, on the wall, y'all good to go?
Yes.
Don, Mary, and Scott. I'm sorry, wait a minute, are you through, Elijah?
I am on Streets Committee, thanks. I do have a question for the chief, though, I guess I should ask something ago. And all that is, is just an update on Academy for our new officer, do you have one of those?
Not really anything new on it, it starts in Janu-, it starts the second week of January. Right now, I haven't filed pretty time about extensions or anything, I mean, the way we're rolling right now, I would like to go ahead and try to just send her on in January, get her finished, and get her back. You know, that's, I didn't, haven't really talked to her, she would go and get out of the extension, I just know that if we need to, we can, but I don't foresee.
Yeah, I think it's worth a better. Yeah, yeah.
And she's, she's ready to go, she's, she's excited about getting it, getting finished, so.
Thank you.
Scott?
Under Finance, Mayor, the town currently has three CDs that mature on September fifteenth. I apologize in advance now, because I don't have any rates to provide to the council. I would just make you aware of that, I would not, if we do not contact or not let First Bank know that we're not renewing those, I think they're on auto renew. So, we probably need to just hold up on that, get some rates, and see what our options are as far as putting those back into CDs, and see what the rates are at different term, I mean, different, whatever the terms are, the council will have to go through that process again and determine, you know, do we want to reinvest those at the same term, at the same rate, same institution. I think that we decided prior to keep all of our money in the same bank, so I don't have those rates as far as six months, one year, eighteen months, two years, up to three years, I think, as far as what we looked at before. I don't have those rates, I don't have a recommendation from the Finance Committee on what to do with those funds, I just think we probably need to have Beverly, let them know that we're not going to auto renew those at six months, until we look at the rates and make a decision.
You got ten days, I think, on that.
Those are, that was a six-month term prior, correct?
Yes.
I don't think, I don't think any CD rates is going to be super.
No, thanks, sir. But Diane, I'd also like to know what our L G, Beverly, if she could also get us, get us short-term rates, First Bank, and also let us know what our L G I P, our local government investment program to the state, to the treasury of Virginia, we need to know what that current rate is also when we're making this decision. The next thing as far as finance, Shane, it's kind of a question for you now that you're here, I'm glad you are. We approved that project tonight. I joke around, that twenty-two thousand dollars, I joke around and say we spent it about three times, but just looking through our, just looking through our accounts payable this month, you know, there's thirty-seven hundred dollars for, you know, eco-signs, I don't have, it's six thousand dollars for banners or ornaments. So, is it just going to be simpler now that we are moved forward with the lighting project expansion, just to do one drawdown now that we've approved that, once Jim Porter needed invoices?
Yeah.
Or do we need to go ahead and, you know, when I first read my accounts payable before that project was officially approved tonight, you know, I was like, this, these funds need to be drawn down from downtown revitalization.
Well, and it's funny you ask, because Debbie called me today, and she said, you know, what have we done in the last year through downtown spending lots? And I said, well, we've done, you know, the streetlights, or we've done the banners, we've done additional railing, you know, we did the runoff, the water runoff for a lot damn low years, and a lot of Mike Akers.
Yeah.
So, and she said, well, see, I didn't know all that, because we haven't asked for that to be reversed.
Yeah.
So, she said, she needs to see all of that too as well, so she can draw that down. So, we need to get all that together, of what we've done and not been paid for, so that we can get paid for.
What do we have to?
We have a meeting Wednesday.
You have one Wednesday.
So, she's going to bring that up Wednesday as well, so, and I told her I'll mention it to you all, but, but that's, you know.
So, we need to keep, I mean, we need, it serves as a magic, nothing else, correct? And then we need to keep.
Yeah, and the thing is, we just need to get that together, because, you know, December's coming.
Oh, it's over.
Yeah, so we need to, it'll be here before we know it, so.
That's right, I mean, Mr. Porter said we might not get invoices until the polls come, that may be after December thirty-first.
We need to get all that put together with invoices or checks paid, so that we can reimburse them. We can do a draw, she can do a drawdown anytime, and get those funds reimbursed.
Currently, on what Scott was referring to a minute ago, between Metal Craft Industries, the forty-four ninety-six twenty-nine, the Mosca Design, seventy-five twenty-six forty-seven, Metal Craft Industries, fifty-two twelve sixty, there's eight hundred and forty dollars for Lane Group for downtown revitalization, and then signs for new street poles, condo signs, nineteen eighty-four twenty-one, that's nineteen thousand to nineteen fifty-seven just in August.
Just probably go ahead and start talking to them in March then.
Yeah, I, I think we're there, I think if we just look, we're there Shane, to the twenty-two thousand, and I'd say just, we need to get that together and go ahead and provide that to Debbie and her, draw it down.
I think by the time you add banners to what I just said, we're.
And that's what I had thought too, and so, that's why I was hesitant, I was saying how much was left in that, because I feel like it's gone, see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I don't think we spent twice.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
That's all under Finance, Mayor.
Okay, all right. We're going to be needing to go into closed session, do I have a motion to go into closed session? Number section two point two dash three seven one one eight, for legal, legal counsel.
Could I add personnel to that, Mayor?
Yeah, those are the only two that we need to go in on Tuesday night.
So, move.
So, second.
I'll say.
Pro discussion, all favor say aye. So, off the week, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say a second.